Take a seat. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting of September 19th of the Temple City Council to order. May we have the roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Fish.
Here.
Councilmember Yu.
Here.
Mayor Potam Mann.
Here.
Mayor Sternquist.
Here. Thank you. We move to item three, the invocation, and this evening we have Pastor Darrell Kelty here with the Community of Christ Church at 9468 Broadway. Please stand and join me in the invocation.
Our holy Creator, we lift our hearts and minds to you this day. We pray that we might be able to open ourselves to your ever-present Spirit, that in doing so we might come to know better what you would have us do to make this community a better place for all of the people who live here, that in doing so we might come to know what you would have us do to make our own lives and the lives of our other residents more open and receptive to your will and ways. Give us the strength to live more honest lives. Give us the wisdom to use the knowledge and strength that you have given us more wisely. Give us the ability to set better thoughts, to see better thoughts through my neighbor's eyes, so that by all unity might come into this community of like winds minds. We work for a better tomorrow for this world, this nation, this state, and this city. This prayer we offer most humbly. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. This evening we have Boy Scout Troop 161, who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Caller will be Anthony Hahn. Scouts participating in the flag salute are Duncan, Brigara, Walter Chow, Joshua Hugh, and Nicholas Kong.
Color guard, attention. Color guard, front and center. Color guard, forward march. All, please post the colors. Please post the color on five. All is in uniform, please salute. All is not in uniform, please place your right hand over your heart. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard, retire. Color guard, retreat. All, color guard dismissed. Audience be now emceed.
I would just like to share that Troop 161 is sponsored by Temple City United Methodist Church, and the scouts will be fundraising on Saturdays and Sundays in September and October, selling popcorn outside of Vons, Arcadia, and REI in Arcadia. So please come out and support the scouts. We move to item five, ceremonial matters, none. Public comments not listed on the agenda. And we have Lucy, Lou, Lucy?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council and city staff. Just want to remind everybody, the second to the last Neighborhood Watch Meeting for Area 9 is coming up this Thursday at the Bethlehem Lutheran Church, 5319 Halifax Road, starting at 5:30. We'll be serving freshly-made soft tacos as usual, delicious. Meeting should start about 6:00, and we will continue with our topics for this year, which touches on AB 109, props 47 and 57, and also, you know, things that are happening in the neighborhood, in addition to, we're talking about disaster preparedness, which really comes in, it's a great timing, because September is Disaster Preparedness Month, and we've had those multiple earthquakes and whatnot, hurricanes. So we would like to make sure everybody comes out to listen to what we have to say, be prepared, and also learn how to protect your neighborhood. That's it.
Thank you, Lucy.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? I don't have any other speaker cards. Okay, I'm going to close public comment and move to item seven, the consent calendar.
Mayor Sternquist, I would ask that we remove item D from the consent calendar.
And that would be the City Temple City Master Tree List?
Correct. And I'll also make a motion to approve the rest of the consent calendar.
I'll second. Any objections? So moved. Tom?
Just removed item D, just kind of to highlight and commend our staff, and specifically Rob Cruz, our arborist, for the amount of work that had to go into putting this Temple City Master Tree List together. If, we've all read it, and those in the public who have not had the opportunity, Rob and I'm sure other staff members, or maybe it was just Rob himself, went out and took a look at every street in the city. And, you know, years ago, we had actually had a plan about what types of trees that we would put on specific streets, and, you know, either they worked or they didn't work. But what Rob has done is he's taken that a step further and made recommendations, which hopefully we will adopt tonight, at least three recommended species on each street in the entire city, so that a little more flexibility, taking into account such things as the heights of the electrical wires and other things that are different throughout the city. So I just want to commend Rob for his work in this matter, and also, if you hadn't had a chance to take a look at it, you can appreciate the detail and the recommendations that were made were just amazing, and I know I looked up my street, and I'm sure many of us have, and, okay, what's in the store? I wish I could pronounce all the different trees. There are a lot of different trees. I didn't realize there were that many different trees in the city, but there are quite a bit. And hopefully now we will have a good policy. It all ties in with things that we've been doing regarding the trees, the sidewalks, and all those issues that kind of come together. So, Rob, I want to thank you for all the work you've put into this, and I think it's just a good thing for the city to have, so thank you very much. And with that, I would move to recommend approval of item D on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Okay, any objections? So moved. I have a question, Rob. Are residents who have a tree taken out that's on the city property line, are they required to replace the tree, or can they say they don't want the tree?
At this time, a lot of times we let them choose, but if, you know, we want to make sure that we've got the right tree in the right spot, so it can be the best tree that it could be. Certain trees, they grow, it's like, it's to make like a person, so it grows to a certain size, so you want it to grow and not have to manipulate it. So, but we are letting people, if they're not going to water it, it's really frustrating to put the tree in and then slowly but surely watch it die. So we're trying to make sure that we're getting trees that, and making sure that people get to pick which tree they like, and so they'll feel responsible and take care of it, because that's what the hardest part for us is to try to water it. If we can just keep them watered, we can trim them and take care of them and keep them as healthy as we can.
So then it's up to the resident to decide whether or not they will...
Yes, we don't try to force it upon them. Yes, because some people, you know, sometimes, maybe they had a bad experience with the tree, maybe with hardscape damage or something, but I think in time, most of them miss the trees because of all the shade and all the goodness they provide. All trees are messy, there are no perfect trees, but we try to pick the best tree for that spot.
The reason I ask is, as you know, there's two houses side by side on Camellia that both lost the city tree, that they've been there forever. I think they're magnolias, but I'm not sure.
I'm not sure what...
McGinnis and...
No, those were liquid ambers.
Oh, liquid ambers.
Yes. And the problem with liquid ambers right now with the drought, a lot of them have insect problems, so they're slowly but surely dying off. And then they're older trees, so we were trying to replace them with some other trees. The problem with liquid ambers are great-looking trees, especially in the fall, problems are that the seed pods, a lot of people complain about, but mostly the hardscape damage, they're very destructive to the sidewalks and the curbs and gutters, and some of the roadways also.
Well, I'm hoping that we encourage people to replace the trees, especially when you come up my street, and I'm sure other streets that have had trees removed too. It's like the second and third house up, and so there's a, there is a huge gap, but you look at the street and there's beautiful trees, and, I mean, I miss that coming up.
Oh, sure. And that's one of the main questions we ask, after we, when we're going to take a tree out, you know, would you like a replacement tree? And then people are excited now that they have three different choices, and, you know, we're trying to, like, most of them are large, medium, and small, but like Tom said, trees that would go, you know, maybe not do as much hardscape damage, or trees that could go into the high voltage lines or something, to try to make it, you know, right tree in the right spot.
And I do know about the watering, because you have replaced a tree three times at one neighbor's home, so...
Yeah.
But it is growing now.
Yes. We give people a few chances. We've been pretty good about it.
Well, thank you, and thanks for all the work you do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, we move to item eight, public caring, none. Unfinished business, none. New business, accepting donations for public library renovation project. And I'm going to hand this off to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Sternquist, members of the council. As you know, the city entered into a funding agreement with the LA County Library and the LA County Community Development Commission to renovate the library next door. As part of that effort, over the last several weeks, the ad hoc, consisting of Mayor Sternquist and Councilmember Fish, have been visiting some of the renovated libraries, and this is actually one of them. This is actually in Hacienda Heights, and why we note this is, one of the features that was part of the funding agreement was to enhance the children's and family component of the library. And this is potentially, this is actually the architect that is not on contract with the county yet, but will be soon, Eric Mars, one of his projects as well. And one of the things that we, that was noted during the process was, it's great, it's a beautiful library, there's nothing, not, we're not criticizing it in any way, but one of the features that was interesting and somewhat lacking, if you just see children, the signage for the library, there's not a architectural or even decorative feature to designate the children's area. So in the proposed budget that's there, the $3.9 million, there will be some public art component that the county has to designate towards this, but to do something, and if you can move forward...
Before you move, what is that in the middle of the picture?
That is a man, a headless man, because we, it was a gentleman who was in the middle of the picture, but we had to take out his face, so sorry.
Did you take the whole thing out?
It's not the Headless Horseman, even though we're close to Halloween.
Was it a prop or was it, it was like, okay?
We can call him the Headless Horseman right now. So, so this is, this is just kind of the feature. So the idea would be that the city would essentially fundraise to go above and beyond what the project costs are to do something like the following, and these are just depictions and ideas of where you could go. So an entry feature that has some level of artistic merit, but also creates an entryway or a sense of place in terms of designating that area of the children's library. Now, this would not be in the existing budget for the renovation. This would be something that we would add on to and would have to fundraise with various entities to try and get the community involved in a fundraising effort. If you can go a few more examples, this is the Cerritos Library, I believe, which is part of, it's not part of the LA County system, but, and there's another one, please. So these types of decorative features that allow for an entryway that aren't part of the normal kind of budget for a renovation project, but would add element of entry and expression to that part of the library. I think there's one more. Now, these are just general examples of what could potentially be done, but we want to contrast that to going to the beginning again, and we'd like it to be something, the idea is to have it something a little bit more enhanced than that.
Can I add to that? When we were out looking at the different libraries, they all had the signs designating the space, and we happened to be with the potential architect at the time, I believe it was at, is this Hacienda Heights?
Yes, Hacienda Heights.
At Hacienda Heights. And after viewing numerous libraries, there was a consistent theme, because I didn't see it. We didn't go to any libraries that had such a dramatic entrance into the children's library, but it said childrens, teens, and I thought, wouldn't it be nice to have something dramatic, since reading starts with children? That's where reading is introduced. Make it magnificent for them to walk into a library and be like, oh, this is amazing, I want to be here, I want to sit here and read, it's a family place. So, and actually, the whole process began with an idea with the county of a children's library, and then morphed into a complete renovation. So, in speaking with the architect, he said, well, if you would like to do something like that, you would need to do it early on in the planning. Temple City will have a seat at the table when all the plans start being proposed in county and city, says what they think they'd like the library to look like. He said, you need to have that pot of money before we move forward, because it's built in with the architect's planning. And Brian, I believe it was 1% of the cost to build the library, not the whole $4 million, but it's 1% of the $2 million...
Of the construction cost.
Will be the, what is it called?
1% of construction cost.
1% of the construction cost is what is set aside for a public art piece, which would come to about, what, $20,000 or so? So $20,000 is basically going to give us probably that sign, if you look at construction costs from the county. So it would say children's library. But I know we have great partners in the city. I think it would be amazing to get our community involved. Brian and I have talked about some different fundraising opportunities, if this was approved that the city could do, and it might be selling a mosaic, where a child draws or makes a mosaic, and we put them outside or inside, wherever they may go, having a beautiful donor wall inside the library from people who decide to make a donation to the library. So there's a lot of things we can do to involve the community and getting them involved in this whole process. So if this gets approved, then we can definitely start moving forward with that. So are there any...
And just our general practice is, when we ask for donations from the community, we like to come back to the council and either accept a donation or get authorization from the council to ask for the donations and set up the fund, in this case, to get that donation, have it tracked, so that people know, and this would be a separate line item in the public art fund that we would track and people could follow, and we would be able to account for. And once, once we go through the project and the costs related to that, we can essentially see, you know, what, how much you've raised, what you've raised it for, and the cost related to that component.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
What is the timetable on this donation process? And you mentioned that they have, it has to be part of the initial design element. It sounds like, I don't know, I mean, is this a six-month period, or, I mean, when is that going to happen?
I think once we sit down with the team as a whole and give them an idea of something like this that we like, they would give us an estimate of what it would cost to do something like this, then we would have an idea of what our goal was for the amount of money we needed.
Well, I understand the goal, but what I'm asking is, how long do we have to reach that goal?
Well, I would imagine until they probably started construction and got to that point.
So the funding agreement did have a general timeline, and the architectural features related to that was a good six-month period of time for architectural review and approval. So you, it would be...
Are we on that timeline now?
Well, if the architect, if the CDC approves the architect within the month, you'll kind of have about a six-month period from the next, you know, 30 days from now.
Okay, so that's generally the time period that we probably...
I would, if, the general time period that you're just talking about, right?
And also, correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't we redoing the whole library? We're not just doing the children's library?
Yes, we are redoing the whole library.
So with these donations, are they limited only to the children portion, or could we do something similar to the adult portion or to the teen section, or, I mean, or is that just, or we kind of aren't there yet, I guess, maybe?
Well, I think you could, but I think that my hope would be that we would start with the entrance into the children's library, which is all going to be open, from what I believe it makes it easier for staff to have a line of vision into the library. That's why I love the one with the book up on the roof. So it eliminates the need for more staffing.
Well, I'm just thinking, are we limiting ourselves? If we're going to go out to the public and say, hey, we'd like to do this for the children's library, and maybe somebody might think of donating, but they would rather donate it for some other portion of the library, we would want to gather those monies as well.
Well, I think that would be...
So maybe not limited to just the children's portion, I don't know. I mean, where's the push going to be? Is it, if the push is just for the childrens, then I can understand that, but...
Well, part of the idea, I think, is to kind of target a specific thing, right? Target a specific, so that it's a little more tangible, right? So that people can identify, okay, my donation is going to this thing, this enhanced component of the project, that's not in the area going to be kind of city-funded, and the funding that we've already put towards it, that provides an enhancement to the project that potentially wouldn't be there otherwise.
And I think it's a great idea, but is there something that we would be able to show those potential donors?
Yes, we need to.
We're thinking, you need to have that in hand, so they can feel and touch it.
But of course, we wanted you to see it first, because you need to approve it and with the following process. And I think, Tom, to answer your question about the teens or adults, it's interesting, but the way he addressed the architects in many of the libraries, even the library that I visited in Chicago that's amazing, was the teens and adults library was really defined by the type of lighting fixtures that they had. Like in the teen sections, they had this really cool, that looked like neon, and you just knew by looking at that, that that would attract teens to go and sit there. The sizing of the chairs was different. But it seemed to be, when I spoke to people, I have to say, it's very hard for people to turn away from donating to the children's portion of the library. And I think if there's anything that would be left over after the cost, of course, that could be put towards the whole library, maybe for a public art piece even outside.
But that was one of the questions I had for our city manager today, is that are we going to be able to do that? If, let's say we raise $100,000 and we decide $75,000 is going to go to the children's portion, can we use that other 25 at our discretion for other things?
I think if it was written...
Is that a doable thing?
I think it's doable, I think what, at least a suggestion, and I think you have comments as well, is that what, we'll know what that target is for this, and try to reach that target first.
Sure.
Compliment, Mayor.
Yeah, I would like to, Madam Mayor, I would like to ask an additional clarification question to that, because I know typically the county has 1% of the construction cost dedicated to public art, and typically, they don't dictate where the art would go. Typically, they were asked for art submissions from various artists, and in other cases before, where the city may participate with the county and select the artists, and the artists would decide or suggest where the art would go. So, but so far, our discussion would be a little bit different from that, because the focus has been, from what I'm hearing, is primarily focused on the children's part or the teens part. So I was just wondering, have we had some basic understanding with the county that if we were going to raise this money, that we'll have a good say in the where this is going to go and be, maybe with a make a decision, I mean, jointly with the county, of course, on how this is going to be going?
The gentleman that we spoke with, and you can clarify that, they most definitely said that the libraries that they had worked on, the city and the county worked together to decide whether it was going to be a public art piece inside or outside. And it was based strictly on the funding from that 1%.
Right.
And that they did have a list of people that were approved, but they would take, so we wouldn't say, you're doing this, but we would give them a concept to the county public art group and say, this is our vision, work with the architect to see what you can come up with.
Right. But I thought that if we were, because the county was going to do that anyway with their 1% construction cost.
Yes, right.
But I thought if we're going to raise funds on top of that, then perhaps we may have a little bit more say in how that is going to be used, or if we were going to combine it with the county's $20,000, then maybe we can work some arrangement where we can achieve our goals.
And I think that's where Brian is going to work his magic, and letting him know that we did partner with $2 million, basically, and we're willing to give some more, but they assured me that we would have a place at that table, and...
Is that in writing somewhere?
Well...
I don't know, but we all heard it.
You know, to follow up just briefly on what Vince said, so, I don't know, I'm maybe looking for some assurances or something that this money that we're going to go out and solicit is going to be for an art component and not necessarily for additional construction costs or overruns, or something like that. I don't want to be sucked into that, saying, oh, you guys have $100,000, well, we need to do this, this, and this.
And I think, Councilmember Chavez, you make a good point, and what was good about the field visits that we've done recently, is we've been talking to the teams that are there, the construction management teams, the other people who are there, the architects themselves, and what's good is that they've had some lessons learned from some of their recent renovations to the one in Hacienda Heights in particular, some of those, so that we can kind of walk through that. Is it, is it a black and white writing? No, sir. But it's definitely part of their approach to working, and as one of the few cities that have actually committed funding to that, I think we both have a level of political assurances and others that will be part of that process. And if the community, if we're going to ask the community to step up too with some of this as well, or ask for our community partners to do that as well, seeing who the team is that's potentially in front of us, who's going to be working through this project for the next two to three years, while we don't have it in writing, we have a team that's committed to a process of us working together through this.
It reminds me, just I'll leave it with this. So last Thursday, I was fortunate enough to attend Hamilton, and there's a line in there, some of you may be familiar with, or actually, I think, one of the tunes, that says, "We want to be in the room where it happens." And I think that's what I would like to see, and I think that's what's hopefully going to happen with this especially, and I know Mayor Sternquist has put a lot of time and effort into this, and based on her past performances, I'm sure she agrees with that, she will be in that room, so...
I think that's a good description, Councilmember Chavez.
I think so, too.
All right.
I was hoping you'd all asked me to be in the room.
We would expect you to be in that.
But most definitely, I think that from the feedback meeting with, as Brian said, the team, I feel more than comfortable that the funding that we would get would be used in the way that we would want it to. And I think because our library... And I think because our library renovation, it's going to be almost like a brand-new library to us, but it's not very large, but it will be dramatic. It would be something that when people walked into our library, they'll remember, oh, my goodness, did you see that entrance to the children's library in Temple City? So, I think we can make that happen. And I know we'll definitely work hard to ensure that those funds go where they need to go.
Well, I think it's gonna be our one shot at this, and might as well make it a dramatic one, why not?
We've waited a long time.
Yes, we have.
And I just wanted to add that, you know, it's really amazing what these architects can do in these small spaces. I mean, this is what they do, they design libraries specifically. So, and many, actually, most of the libraries that we visited were very close to the size of the library that we have, because we wanted to get a feel for what they can do, because it is a small space. And it was really just amazing. And plus, the technology that they're adding, the video equipment, the large screens, the computers, the lighting, you know, that's all new to us, but for them, it's just, it's old hat. So, I trust them very much. And like I said, it's really a great experience to go and see what these other cities have done. In a small space, that's the thing, is they're not two, three-story libraries, so.
Mayor, if I may ask a few questions as well. In, I guess, one of the things that came to mind when you mentioned the 1% that the county takes from the construction costs for public art, like in the example for the Hacienda Heights Library, I'm wondering, like, for, in that specific example, where did that 1% go?
You don't see it here, but there is some state, and I may be confusing this with another library, and I apologize, but the signage was similar in most of the libraries, but there was a stained glass component, and I believe it's the Hacienda Library, that was the 1%, so it was a kind of artistic stained glass that they used to work through the entryway, I believe it was. So, it was a beautiful piece, don't get me wrong, but it wasn't anything that kind of popped out in terms of, within the space of the library.
Yeah, 'cause what I would wonder, and since you have talked to the architect already, is I wondered, with the money that he would have had for the Temple City Library, what could he have done with it?
For the children's library.
Yeah, for the children's library portion. And just so I could get a sense of scale of, all right, we can get to this point, like maybe one of your other examples.
So, that sign, possibly, that sign would probably be a lot more than you would think it would be.
Which sign were you referring to?
It doesn't exist as children's.
Well, no, no, actually, the other example was-
He's talking about the-
How much do those things cost?
I honestly have no idea.
Yeah, like, how much would that cost?
Because like, I'm trying to even just get a ballpark idea.
If I were to guess, it's probably the twenty, thirty thousand dollars.
That's what I think, I'm thinking more like thirty.
Councilmember, you would have a good sense of that.
Well, I guess a lot depends on what it's made of and all those types of things.
And I was actually thinking, if we set a realistic goal of like fifty thousand dollars, that's, you think, you want more?
Oh, no, I'd be happy with that.
If we set a realistic goal of about fifty thousand dollars, I actually feel that we would exceed the fifty thousand dollars. And that's just because of interest that people have already expressed to me that if you put it for the children in Temple City in the library, I'm happy to donate. I mean, it's just, I think people want to, don't know the importance of libraries. And one of the things that's so amazing about the LA County library system is that our schools profit so much. And Kathy Perini and I had a discussion, a lengthy discussion, this morning. And she said, I've heard that the library has these neat programs, and I was telling her all about them, you can go, the kids can go online and get certificates, you can partner with the Doug Sears Learning Center. And she was like, set up an appointment, and Jing is here, with the Jing, she said, because she wants to meet with Jing to see what the high school students can get involved with. And so, I mean, it's so much more than just a place where you go and check out a book. It's just a-
Does she understand that it's right across the street from her office?
Let me know whatever you need regarding the library. I didn't think I wanted to ask that question, Tom.
I'd never surprise that she wouldn't be aware of that. Maybe they want to partner with us on this, too. Is there nothing in the report in here, and maybe we're not to that point of the details? I'm assuming that we're gonna have some type of reach publicity. Will you be coming back with the details?
We would come back with the details, absolutely.
And I think we could do that by, at least our second meeting next month.
Yeah, sooner the better, I think.
So, the answer to Mayor, Councilman Mepratem Manz, that's, this is kind of, this would be kind of, we use this example to do one of the better contrasts between the two, so you could see thirty-five thousand dollar range. That one in the Ceritos Library is a little bit more expensive, because it has a lot more detail in the back. But the other one was the better example.
And something like this, I don't think would, I mean, it's a great concept.
But it's not proper scale.
If you didn't have the middle one, because we want to be able to see inside.
And this one is another kind of good example of what's probably achievable with that level of fundraising.
Yeah, I agree with my fellow councilmembers, I think this is a fantastic opportunity.
That one's really cute, too.
But I just think if, I'd be more comfortable if we had something more tangible to, like if I'm talking to a resident, I'd be able to point to a series of concepts and say, hey, this is what we're trying to do here. I think that's an easier sell to someone than just say, we're raising money in general.
And I think that's why we have it under new business, is because the first step was to get approval from the council. And then now that we know we have approval, then we could potentially have some discussions with the architect, the whole team, and say, look, this is kind of the idea. Have them do at least a back-of-the-napkin type of sketch for us. Like when we had the preliminary, Vince, I think you did that one, right? For the council on the outline of the library, something simple like that, that just gives people an idea.
Okay. Well, I think tonight, we'll be actually directing staff to work on all the details, whether or not we partner with the county's Public Arts Commission. Or, because sometimes they draw the line between the architect and the artist. The architect's supposed to provide the background, the structure, lighting, all the other stuff. They don't allow the architect typically to actually get involved in actually creating the art piece, and they leave that up to the artist. But however, I think if we're in the case that we might be able to work out some deal, that we may have a little more say, so maybe the architect can provide some other thing. For example, I'm not totally sure whether this is from the artist or from the architect, what we see, what we actually see here. So, I think that's what we'll look to, we should look to the city manager and the staff to work out those details and bring it back to us.
If I were to just ask one, I mean, I really like the idea, but let me just think of one worst-case scenario, possibility. Let's say we, my understanding is we would create a fund within our existing public art fund. That's where the donations go to. And then after we collect all the donations, we hand it over to the county, and the county uses that as part of their funds to design and construct it. So, let's just say we raise this amount of money, and then the county, for whatever reason, decides that we're no longer gonna have a seat at a table to contribute to the finalization of this design. Would we then be able to say, all right, we're gonna keep this money for our public art fund, and maybe do public art outside the library in Temple City Park? Because that's like our property?
I think you may want to do that before you give them the money.
Yeah, that's what I mean, is do we reserve the right at any point in time to not give the money to them if the terms are not tangible to you?
So, your current funding agreement that you approved with the county does have some, remember, we did it in phases, we did four hundred fifty thousand, and we're gonna do another. It wouldn't be inappropriate to do some kind of side letter with them related to that, that kind of spelled out some of that, not necessarily in a grant amendment to the agreement, but a side letter per se that we could walk through with them together, so that they understand some general conditions that are there, that are not merely spelled out specifically in the funding agreement, but is, for lack of a better term, is a side letter to that, you know, one-page or something like that, that can kind of spell some of those general conditions out.
Yeah, because I agree with both Councilmember Chavez and you, point is, I think having a seat at a table is absolutely important. If we're gonna convince our residents and our community to contribute their own money to this, we better make sure it goes where we want. So, yeah, but, I mean, I ask these questions not because I'm not in support of it, I'm very supportive of this measure, and I really hope it plays out the way that Mayor Sternquist and Councilmember Fish have described.
You know, at the end of the day, too, we have to remember, this is their building. We're basically partnering with them, but I can't imagine, under any scenario from a legal standpoint, that they're gonna give up complete control to their building. They're gonna have to have some say still in it. But we want that also as well.
Yeah, I'm just saying, the money we raise is technically first going into our city funds before we transfer it over to the county, right?
And I so appreciate the questions, because, as you know, I've said it many times over, I'm not a detailed person, and I don't get into the weeds of things, I hate that. But I just, you know, see the idea and then want to get it finished. So, I appreciate that there's people on council like you that, you know, question the things, because that's what makes us a great council. So, never think that, you know, you know how passionate I am about this, but I am never offended. I mean, the more questions you have regarding the library, I'm happy to have our staff, you know, answer them, because I think that's what we need, is we need people like all of us here, who, you know, have different ideas and different questions. So, no, William, I think that, you know, I very much appreciate your questions, and Tom.
Just real quick for Eric, is there anything that comes to mind that would prohibit us, under the terms of the contract, from doing something like this? So, we're not stepping into a category that maybe we shouldn't, should be uncertain about or anything?
No, I don't believe there's anything in the funding agreement that we have with the county that would prohibit us from raising this money. There's obviously nothing in the agreement at this point in time that requires the county to accept any money that we raise.
Yeah, so we could go, hey, we had seventy-five thousand dollars, they say, no, thanks, we're not interested.
I think some of those details need to be worked out before we actually crank up the solicitation process.
I agree, and especially before we write a check.
Yes, yeah. At this point, certainly, any money that you raise could be used, it's a lawful governmental purpose. We can create a fund, so I'm satisfied with that. We'll have to observe some guidelines in how we go about making solicitations for donations. And keep in mind, people can write how they want their donation spent. And so, we'll have to work on those details, because if somebody gives us a check that says, I want it, I'm donating money for X, and we accept it, we can only spend it for whatever X is. And that's why we really need a concept to have people donate for, so we can have them donated.
And along the lines, I think Mayor Mepratem brought up a good point, worst-case scenario, let's say we get all this money and we don't, we're not able to use it, then what do we do with it? I mean, that's-
Typically, you have to return it to the donors.
Yeah, that could be a-
Unless you go and ask the donors to agree to an alternative purpose.
Yeah, so that might be why we want to work out those details with the county prior to, or at least get a general understanding of that.
Brian, can you get a date from them, or even a tentative date, as to when they see that meeting taking place, where the architect, you know, the county people come together and talk about the library and see, gives us a better idea?
Yes, we'll get some firm dates, because we're still waiting on the contract with the architect, that we know potentially is going to be, so.
And then, both Nan and I will, along with Brian, will keep council abreast of any developments. But if you do get a chance to go out to the Ceritos Library, I believe one of the pictures was Ceritos, it'll give you a really good idea of the draw, how dramatic it is to walk in and see that. Okay?
And I just want to add that, when we went to these libraries, we always asked the architect or the project manager, you know, what made you decide to put the lighting this way, or what made you put the shelving this way, or choose the? And, you know, lots of times, it was like, well, you know, that was an issue that they had in that certain library, as far as that was a dark place, it needed more lighting. So, they do, you know, they don't always, but they do take into consideration what's needed. So, I liked, I mean, not that we can make any kind of final decision, but they do take our opinion in consideration when they're doing all these different things. And that was, that made us feel really comfortable, because we kind of felt like we would have ownership of it, and we could, you know, they would, like they were saying about the, just, and it can be as simple as the color of the chairs. You know, some of these libraries, you think of the old-school, dark furniture, wooden bookcases, and they're not, they're beautiful, they're white, they're bright green chairs, they're bright red sofas, like in the teen center. And we're like, this is so, and they said, well, you know, they wanted that. Now, can they always do that? No, because of course, it's the county that has the last word. But they do take into consideration what the library needs. So, and I felt very confident that they were really wanting to make us happy, so. And like I said, it's not in writing, but-
I think I've heard the direction of the council and kind of what we, what we'll return back with and some of the concerns that have been expressed.
Do we have any public comments?
So, well, is everybody finished now with?
I just want to add one comment, I just want to comment, Madam Mayor, and I guess Councilmember Fish, for coming up with this wonderful idea of, you know, enhancing what we already have and partnering with the county. Because county has the public funds for the public art, so we may as well add to them, make something really nice out of it, so. Just wanted to say that was, that's a wonderful idea.
Thank you. Okay, I'd like to open public comment, is there anyone? Nope, okay, closing public comment?
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Lucy? Sorry, me again. It's a great idea, I know we've been in the talks for a long time, I can't wait to see it. Just a penny's worth, when the fundraising is approved and we can move forward, we have a lot of community events coming up in the foreseeable future that if we can do tables and, you know, be out in the community, like at Camellia Festival or whatever festival we have, that would be great, because we can definitely, it's happening in front of the library, if we can have the sketches for people to see, hey, this is what you're gonna get, hit all the preschools, and, you know, those are the people who are really gonna be vested, because their kids are gonna grow up with those libraries, with that new library.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, closing public comment, any more council comment, council motion?
Mayor Sternquist, I will make a motion that we consider the acceptance of private donations for the purpose of funding the required public art as part of the ongoing library renovation project, paid for by the city and county of Los Angeles, and direct staff to establish a special account within the city's public art fund to take all additional actions necessary to implement the council's decision.
A second. Okay, any objections? Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please? First, Mayor, Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Mepratem Manz?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist? Yes.
So, we heard your direction and what were additional items to kind of bring back as well, so we will do that.
Thank you. Okay, we move to item B, Los Angeles County Community Choice Energy Program.
Mayor Sternquist, members of the council, before you, we, in the summertime, we actually did a receive-and-file item related to the Los Angeles Community Choice Energy Program. Since that time, as Director Forbes will discuss, some action has taken place. You have two items, oh, you have two staff reports. The staff report that we provided to you back in the summertime, that provides a little bit more detail into the program, and then a little bit more analysis from staff related to the program. And I'll let Mr. Forbes provide some additional background information.
Thank you, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As Mr. Cook said, we brought this to you as an FYI item on the consent- As Mr. Cook said, we brought this to you as an FYI item on the consent calendar back in July. The reason we did it as an FYI at that time was because there wasn't a whole lot happening yet with the program and we, there wasn't a whole lot to report at that time. But there has been some movement since then, so we wanted to provide you with an update and with a formal recommendation on what we recommend that the city do with the program at this time. Just very quickly and, and briefly for the public, the LACC is Los Angeles Community Choice Energy Program, which is a CCA for short, which is a Community Choice Aggregation Program. In a nutshell, what it is, is an alternative for customers who are within SoCal Edison's territory. It's an alternative to purchase electricity from this joint powers authority rather than purchasing it from Edison. The electricity would still be delivered by Edison, all of the wires and poles of Edison would remain in place, but the actual electricity flowing through that would be purchased through this agency rather than from Edison. The reasoning for that, the two main reasons for it, number one, is that the financial modeling that they have done shows that there will be very likely cost savings for customers because the theory is that this agency will be able to purchase power at lower rates than Edison. Secondly, this agency will be able to focus on purchasing renewable power, so power from wind, solar, hydroelectric, as opposed to typically natural gas power that a lot of the plants are using today. And in some communities, that is, that's an important policy decision for them to give that choice to their residents and businesses to be able to purchase energy from renewable sources. So what's happened since July, so far, three cities have voted to join LACC, South Pasadena, Rolling Hills Estates, which was the first one, and I'm drawing a blank right now on who the third one was, Calabasas. So those are the three cities that have joined. The West Hollywood City Council has also indicated that they intend to join and they have directed their staff to bring back the documentation for formal adoption, but that has not happened yet. When the first city, Rolling Hills Estates, joined, that started a six-month clock during which all cities can join as what they're calling initial participants. That six-month period runs until the end of December, or right before the end of December. So any cities that join between now and then are considered initial participants, the main advantage of that being that there is no commitment of city funds required to join during that time. You will be guaranteed to reap the advantages of the ten million dollars in seed money that the County of Los Angeles put into the program. Beyond that initial six months, there is no particular deadline, cities can opt to, to join whenever they would like. But after the initial six months, there may be not, they're not certain that there will be, but there may be a cost associated with joining at a later time because it's, it's at the discretion of the board at that time and based on what the financial situation is at that time, whether there would be some commitment of city funds to join. So our recommendation this evening is that you direct us to just continue monitoring this and to bring back a report for you in three months from now, which would be the beginning of December, still within the six-month period, so that if the council decided at that time that you wanted to join, there would still be enough time to take the action to do that. The, the main reasons that we're not recommending joining it right now are just primarily because there's just a lot of uncertainty and unknowns at this time. It's discussed in the staff report, but it's very probable and they're predicting that there will be savings and that this will be a good thing, but those predictions are based on a lot of assumptions, which are based on a lot of variables, which could change at any time. And so far, there are several of these operating throughout the state and so far, they seem to be operating successfully. But we would like to, to look and see what the interest is from other cities in Los Angeles County and how this goes for the first few months. As noted in the staff report, there was, the most recent development on this was that not Edison, but two other investor-owned utilities in California, PG&E, Pacific Gas and Electric, and San Diego Gas and Electric, were both making moves in Sacramento over the last couple of weeks to try and get the legislature to put a moratorium on further forming of, of CCAs. And any, what they were trying to do is any that were not already operating as of September first would have been, would not have been able to start operating, there would have been a moratorium. I looked around online this evening and was unable to find any further information about that, and since the legislative, legislative section, session ended, it does not appear that they were able to get anything off the ground this session, but there's, that's still hanging out there. Edison so far has taken a neutral position on this and they've, they've said that they're, they're there to, you know, serve their customers and, and they have their, their customers' interest and they will seek to make a smooth transition for any customers that want to join a CCA. So San Diego Gas and Electric and Pacific Gas and Electric are being a little more aggressive with it, whereas our, our provider, SoCal Edison, is taking more of a neutral approach to that. And we, we have been in communication with, with our Edison representatives also, and they have said the same thing, that they're, they're taking a neutral approach and they will work with their customers and with the cities on whichever, whichever decision is made.
Well, I would imagine that's because they don't foresee losing any money. Isn't that always a driving force in this thing?
Yeah, that's the, the, San Diego and Pacific Gas and Electric, part of the arguments that they're making are that the, the costs to them of, of their customers leaving have not been appropriately addressed because they will still continue using their infrastructure, they have investment in that infrastructure. Also, they have, some of the power providers have long-term energy contracts that they entered into, making certain long-term financial assumptions, and now if the CCA start taking away their customers, those financial assumptions won't allow them to compete as well. So that's, that's their argument is, is that the financial aspects of it have not been addressed. So that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. So LA County started this.
Yes.
Yeah, so LA County, I mean, I think we need to remember, not just the three little cities, LA County is a monster municipality. And then so, we join, we have the buying power of LA County with us. So, I don't know, we should really wait till December because, so, so this, LA County is going with this no matter what, how many cities join it, or is this a sure thing, this CCA is already operating?
Yes, it's, the, it has formed, the, the JPA has formed, and so there are currently four members, Los Angeles County and the three cities. The Board of Directors has already started meeting, they're in the process of recruiting for an executive director and going through the process of ramping up the JPA. Their implementation schedule, they're, they're planning to roll it out in phases, starting in 2018 and then into 2019. So regardless of whether more cities join, they are moving forward.
And the county has felt important enough that they throw ten million dollars to seat money to start this CCA. It seems to me as a good thing, but anyway, thank you.
Well, I don't know that necessarily throwing a lot of money or something makes...
No, they're willing to invest ten million dollars to start this.
Well, obviously, somebody was willing to invest it. I'd like to know more about, that seems like an awful lot of money to start something. I mean, where's that ten million dollars going, do we even know? And who is, who is really overseeing that ten million? I presume it's the county.
It's the board, no, it's the board, according to staff report.
There's the Board of Directors, the CCA, one member from each.
The ones that are administering this ten million dollars. Do we know anything, the three cities have joined, do they have anything in common? Because I'm looking at these three cities, I would, I would, without knowing more information, it would appear not. They're, seem like, not only they separated geographically, but different types of communities. We've got South Pasadena, Rolling Hills Estates, and Calabasas. I wouldn't think to lump those three cities in to do anything together.
They're all over the place.
Is there anything that we know about why they joined, or what is it unique about their city, or?
No, they're all, they're all relatively small cities. Calabasas and Rolling Hills Estates are predominantly residential, South Pasadena has some commercial. But I, I don't know that there's any common thing that the three of them chose to join.
One of the things I was a little confused about in reading the report and going over this is, can residents and businesses individually make this choice if the city doesn't join, doesn't choose to join? Or does the city have to join?
No, the, the city has to join in order for residents and businesses to join.
To be able to hold, to be part of.
Right.
But once the city joins, do those businesses and residents have to go this route as well?
No, they can opt out. They're, once the city joins, everyone is automatically enrolled in it, but they have the option to opt out at any time, even, even before it starts. The residents would receive notice ahead of time saying, the city has joined this program, you will be automatically enrolled in it on this date unless you choose to opt out.
And who's going to pay for that and do that? The city, I presume, not the, not the county?
The, most of the cost will be borne by the, the LACC. However, there is an expectation that cities will help with the outreach and publicity and all that to their residents.
Do we have any idea how much that's going to cost?
It would be primarily a staff commitment. I think as far as, you know, paying for materials and things like that, the CC, LACC would probably assist with that, but it would be a, a staff time commitment.
So in the report, you refer to projected savings of five percent, they said the city would save about twenty thousand annually. Is that the city, or is that the community?
That's the city.
Facility.
The city, just us, yeah.
As a customer.
The, their estimate, their financial estimates in the study that they did are that, on, on average, residents would save about five percent off of their bill. So that twenty thousand is just based on what our power bills are, that's as an agency.
So the residents would also look at a potential savings of five percent off their current electric bill?
Correct.
And, but would they have to, would there be any outlay, any financial outlay on their behalf to get this?
No.
Okay. Well, why would anybody want to turn down five percent less than I would get that? Is there something, is there something we're missing here, or is that almost too good to be true?
Five percent is the projection, there is, you know, if, if the variables change, if the energy market changes, or the regulatory scheme in Sacramento changes, there is a possibility that the, the LACC would not be able to be competitive with Edison's rates, in which case it is possible, they don't, they're not saying that they're expecting it to happen, but it is possible that their rates could go higher than Edison's rates, in which case customers may want to opt out to go back to the lower rate.
And they would not be happy?
Yeah, and, and there are some, one of the arguments for this is the, the renewable energy argument, that some people, some customers, some communities may be willing to pay more in order to say, I am one hundred percent renewable in my energy. So it, it is possible that some people may want to stay with it just so they can say, I'm purchasing a hundred percent renewable energy, which if they purchase from Edison, they may not be able to say that because Edison determines what the power mix is.
I would imagine that at some point, if this thing, if this thing does take off, this has to serve as a wake-up call to Edison and thinking, well, maybe we need to change some of our procedures here, do something, if at anything.
Mike, I have a question. In our staff report, it mentions that San Diego Gas and Electric Company has, is proposing a moratorium? Would that affect, and it said that it may affect the, the launch, do we expect to know the answer to that before December?
We should know before December if, if there's any, if there's any movement on that. They were trying to make something happen before the legislative session ended and we don't believe they were successful in doing that. But we should know more in the coming weeks, if it looks like there's going to be changes.
So what would happen if we entered into it and then they put the moratorium on it?
It would, it would just, it would delay things initially, potentially. I don't think it would, it wouldn't affect us necessarily financially, we would, we would still be part of the JPA, just the JPA may or may not be able to implement on this, on its current schedule. If it resulted in further regulatory changes that then could have impacts on the financial viability of it, then that's a different story. But again, then we go back to, we could always opt out of the JPA at any time.
So we really won't know an answer to any of those questions until, until at least December? Is that kind of what you're telling us?
As far as whether there's going to be any changes, I don't, I don't know that there's an expectation that there are going to be changes, that's just what those two companies were trying to do. I have not heard or seen that there's an expectation that things are going to change, but it's a possibility because those two companies are pushing for it.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just want to know, it's not so much a moment of comment, because I was reading the literature, it was a good staff report, that LA, that LA County would have one seat at the board, and so every participating city, not very often you have the same voting power as LA County.
Right.
So I thought it's a pretty decent deal. And they're the ones putting in the ten million dollar seat.
In that respect, yes.
You know what I find interesting is that at the COG, thirty-one cities, we've been talking about this for months, and only three of the thirty-one cities have joined in to date, which, you know, usually if something...
Are those the three cities that are named in the report, or is there...
Yes. I believe, what, South Pasadena?
The only one that's in our COG is South Pass, the other ones are, are not in San Gabriel Valley.
And, and South Pass, usually when they vote on things, they're pretty conservative. So I was surprised to hear that South Pass went forward with it. But of the thirty-one cities, there seems to be some hesitancy, and I can't figure out why, no one seems to share, other than we're just sitting back and waiting to see what other cities are doing.
Well, I can tell you probably some of the hesitant cities, they're probably getting something similar to what our staff has prepared, and that is a pro and cons list. And if you look at the pro and cons list, I think the cons outweigh the pros, at least for now.
And I think when something's a, a really good thing to do, the thirty-one cities are pretty much all on board at the same time. So makes me a little reluctant when I see, you know, quite the majority of cities not opting in. And we have a meeting this Thursday, so I definitely would like to see if there's any new information that comes forward from the COG and/or that other cities have uncovered that maybe we haven't found. But there is a, a higher fee, right, after, is it after December, that residents, what is the difference? If you wait?
Yeah, if, if city, all the cities that join within the first six months are guaranteed not to have to put up any funding. Cities that join after that may, no, they don't know yet, but they may have to put up funding because it'll depend on where the, the financials of the JPA are at that time and whether the administrative overhead of bringing in another city, if they think there's going to be some cost associated with that, or that it's going to somehow skew the financial predictions, then it would be at, at the determination of the Board of Directors at that time if they wanted to impose an entry fee. But as far as the customers go, it, they would still get whatever the rates were in place at that time. So the, all, all the customers would get the same rate, it's not that cities joining later, their customers aren't going to be paying a higher fee than the cities that joined earlier, that's not the case. It's just the one time, if there may be a one-time entry fee to get into the JPA.
And, you know, I just wanted to, to mention, I know that they have made a deadline, but I can't imagine they're not going to extend it if they only have three cities.
We don't know.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, we, we don't know, but what I'm saying is, you know, they're going to want more cities to join, so they're going to offer an incentive, which is like, not a fee. So, I mean, and look at how long it's been and there's only three cities.
Yeah, but when you start changing things like that, you lose a little bit of credibility. You can't just say, well, I'm going to change my mind now because we don't have enough cities.
Yeah, but do, do you really think that they're going to, you know, make this ten million dollar investment for three cities?
Well, yes, as...
I mean, I know we don't...
As you said, county's a big place.
Right, I know we don't know, I know we don't know that.
They're doing it on their, they're doing it regardless of whether the cities do it.
Yeah, I think what, what the county's looking for.
They're just looking for...
They just want more people to help their buying power. They've been long looking for, because you think county's big, but Southern California is, is also a big player. So, because the county wants us to help them to make it a better bargaining, so...
All right, any other questions? Nope. I'd like to open public comment, I believe Steve, we have yours, speaker card.
Mayor Sternquist, Mayor Protem Mann, council members, city staff, I'm quite familiar with this. Riverside County, they started to do something like this, the city Corona joined hands with Riverside, and they, they no longer have Edison at all, people just walked away from it. They have actually, the idea behind this and the idea behind there was to not... They have actually, the idea behind this and the idea behind their was to not have Edison. Riverside Water and Riverside Power Company serves Corona, and they pay a much cheaper rate. And I saw the article in the paper about a month ago, when the Board of Supervisors voted this. And the whole idea is to basically form this company, give cheaper rates to everybody, and try to form a, a power company like Edison that is based on renewable energy and based on the ability to provide a better service than Ed, than Edison provides. And, um, I know probably more cities will join. This is probably a little early to join this, knowing that, you know, you can basically count on, on, um, the, um, Edison and San Diego Gas and Electric to try to go to court to block this. They won't, it won't happen. And even if they voted, it could get challenged in court, because you can't stop a business from forming, no, no matter what it is. Years ago, about 15, 20 years ago, they deregulated the electrical industry, just like they did the ga, the gas industry, so people can buy from wherever they want, and it was never implemented. And I think that the Board of Supervisors made a good step in doing what they're do, what they're doing, and I think this is a good step, maybe, to wait a month or so and then join it. I'm sure a lot of other cities will join this. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, closed public comment.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, sorry, Jim. Jim, will you fill out one before you? Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. Um, I'll admit, I didn't read any of the information on this, but just what I'm gathering right now is I see another bureaucracy being formed. And when you think about it, where will this organization get its power from? Edison's, uh, Pacific Gas and Electric, San Diego, produce their own power. Also locally, Azusa, Long Beach, Glendale, and Pasadena have their own power plants. So would we be buying electricity from them? Those cities took their responsibility to brought, to provide power for their communities, and I guess they're doing okay with that. But, uh, where would this electricity be purchased from? I know people are talking about renewable sources and whatnot, but I don't know any other producers around here. Uh, I don't know if it's still true now, but I know the City of Los Angeles, for their DWP, was buying power from a company called Bonneville Power, out of Utah. And they have coal-fired plants. So, you know, that's where a part of their electricity comes from, because it's cheaper. They throw it into their system. And then how are you going to filter out, you know, whose electricity is coming to your meter? It just sounds kind of, uh, not really sketchy, but I, I'd like to know more details how they're going to do it. And also, how's the California Public Utilities going to handle this? I mean, supposedly a new company, uh, that's going to be providing this power that isn't Edison or, uh, LADWP. So those are just some questions that I came up with, and all I see is another bureaucracy. I mean, there's going to have to be somebody that's going to be running this. And, uh, at this point in time, like I say, I don't see who the other providers would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael, do you want to respond to?
The, it, the, the, um, this type of program has been filtered through the PUC. This is in state law, this, and this has been around for a long time. So this is not a new concept, uh, on the state level or otherwise. So, um, regulatory issues related to the PUC still apply in this case. There's nothing unusual that this would create outside of the, as, as Michael or Mr. Forbes has stated, the regulatory scheme that this joint powers authority would be beholden to as to any other utility. So there's nothing outside of that scope at all.
Any questions?
I have one last question. Um, as the CCA, I think they can purchase power not just from Edison, they can purchase through any other utilities as well, but using SCE as, as a conduit to deliver the, the goods, so to speak, to the customers, right?
Correct. They're, they're, Edison is still the infrastructure delivery system. It's the energy that they're buying through the open market, or whatever programming they're trying to do could be out of state, could be even, you know, potentially Canada or other places that they could.
Buy from Pasadena, if there's excess power, buy from LA City, if they have more power, and so forth.
Exactly. And as, and as the dynamics are changing too, related to how renewable energies are impacting, uh, the energy market as well, that's, that, that will play into that. That's why you hire an expert, and that's why they're going after, to get a, uh, experienced executive director to this entity.
So, so in theory, um, if we, as a city, joined, technically, all of our residents would still be getting their electric bill from Edison. So you, you kind of, you don't really see the change, except in the way the rate is negotiated for our potential customer.
I think it's, uh, they're getting a bill from CCA, right? Unless they opt out.
They, they will be enrolled in the CCA, but the, the bill, the, as far as from what the customer sees, they will, everything will still go through Edison. Bills will come from Edison, all customer service will go through Edison, service connect and disconnect will come from Edison. Um, on the Edison bill that you, that everyone gets now, there's a line item on there somewhere that, that is for the purchase of energy. So the, the only difference would be that line item would be changed out, so that instead of purchasing, the electricity that comes through the wires to your house right now is being bought from Edison. But under LACC, that would be, the, the energy coming in would be bought from LACC. So the line item on your bill would be LACC instead of Edison. But as far as the delivery of the service, customer service, the way the power gets to your house, the wires, the poles, all of that would, would, the customer would not notice any difference. That would all still be done through Edison.
Okay. Michael, I have another question.
I was going to close public comment.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I don't think you did. Um, Michael, if we joined and then we opted out, do you see any kind of a cost?
That's another one of the unknowns. It depends on, again, what, at whatever point the city chooses to, to drop out, what the financial situation of the JPA is at that time. Um, and if the board believes that there would be some financial impact to the JPA as a result of a city dropping out, then it would be at the board's discretion at that time, if they wanted to assess, um, any kind of a, I don't want to call it a fine, but a pen, a termination fee for, for leaving the JPA.
So in actuality, they are asking us to join something and telling us we can opt out, but yet, there could be a penalty that we don't know of?
Well.
Because they haven't decided yet? Right?
I, I wouldn't, yeah, it's not that they haven't decided, it's that they, it's just, there's too many unknowns. Um, what another option could be, because we, we as a customer of the, of the JPA or of the LACC could also choose to unjoin as a customer, but stay in the JPA. So it's possible, if they want, if they wanted to assess some fee to us for leaving that we didn't want to pay, all of our residents and businesses and us could opt out of it as customers, and, but we would still be a member of the JPA, but nobody would be a customer. So that could be one way around. You know, if, if there ended up being some kind of assessment for leaving that we didn't want to pay, that would be a way around. It would be just to unjoin as a customer, so that we're not paying the rates anymore. But we would still be a member of the JPA.
Councilmember Fish, to give you an idea of why there might be costs to exit from a JPA. The JPA has the ability to buy power. Power purchases can be done on long-term contracts. So the JPA could enter into an obligation that's a multi-year contract to pay for power, and we, as a member of the JPA, would have a fractional piece, an obligation of that contract. We might have to pay our way out of or sell that fractional piece. There should, could be some costs involved in that. The JPA also has the ability to purchase its own power generation facilities. So it could purchase capital facilities, and there could be long-term costs of that as well, that members might have to pay, or sell, or otherwise get out of, in order to pull out of the JPA. And we don't know any of that yet, because none of it exists.
Wow. Okay. Thank you.
And Eric, when JPAs are formed, in order to change something, they have to have, like, a, a pretty strong majority vote, don't they?
It depends how the voting is, is structured. Um, well, yeah, it requires a vote of the board, and either it's a four-fifths vote, or it's a majority vote, or it's a weighted vote, and I'm not sure, can't remember the voting requirements of.
Yeah, one of, one of the things, um, when, when Eric's office reviewed the documents for us, and in talking with them, one of the concerns that, that was raised, which is noted in the staff report, is that, um, most of the, e, each agency, as we discussed before, has one member on the board, so it's equal in that way. Um, and most votes are either simple majority, or in some cases, there would be a two-thirds, but the idea being, you know, one city, one vote. However, um, the joint powers agreement has provisions for a weighted vote, whereby any, I think, I believe it's three members, any three members who are on the positive side of a positive vote can request it to be changed to a weighted vote, in which case it would be weighted based on your agency's share of the electrical load. So in that case, the, the county would, would clearly be, you know, the heavy hitter in that vote, because they're going to have a much larger share of the load than any of the member agencies. Um, so there is a possible scenario in which, and who knows what that could be, or what the vote would be, or how we would even be affected. It's, it's, there's no way to say it this time, but as a very small city with a very small electrical load, um, we would probably not be on the, if, if we were, if our interests were adverse to others in a vote like that, we would not be on the winning end of that vote, most likely. We would be a, we, we could be a small player in that, if, if there was some, some decision being made that could be adverse to our interests.
I had to have a question for Eric. Now that you, thank you for describing sort of the contractual obligations that we may have. It, if I understand correctly, if we were to, say, theoretically, join the LACC, and since the LACC hasn't gone through the process of negotiating an effective contract for the CCE, is it possible that we can withdraw prior to that contract being finalized, with no financial obligations to opt out?
I think that's possible. What I don't know is what kind of entrance fee that might be required, or upfront capital outlay might be required. The best time to withdraw would be before there are any long-term arrangements, but there might be an instance in which members are required, even before the, things are negotiated, to put in an initial capital contribution, startup money, like the $10 million that County of LA put in. Uh, our share would be smaller. One possible penalty, even if no agreements or phrases, we have to leave that in. But, but that's all speculative at my point, at this point. We don't know. But it could be that, nothing signed, we, we walk free. We don't, we just don't know yet.
I have a question and a comment. First of all, my question is, you may have mentioned this, Director Forbes, when is the six-month, uh, open period el, uh, end?
December, December 27.
December 27, okay. And my comment is, I find it hard to believe that the county would invest $10 million in this project, not take any money from any of the other cities that are joining in these six months, and not want to have a weighted vote in this thing. And after what I've just heard about the weighted vote, um, I can foresee that happening quite often. And so, even though we may feel like we have a seat, it may be more ceremonial than actually effective, so, at least that's my feeling on the thing. That's a lot of money to invest.
Yes, it is.
And not ask anybody else to put in a dime and, uh, share the, share the decision-making with those people. I, I just find that hard to believe, so, that's all I have.
Anyone else? Nope. Okay. Can we have a council motion?
Um, Madam Mayor, I would make a motion that we continue monitoring the progress of the Los Angeles Community Choice Energy Program and report back to the council prior to December 27, 2017.
A second?
Okay, any objections? Can we have a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Uh, yes, but I just want to add one simple note. I'd like to see the report back much sooner than December, in a little bit more detail. I mean, I'm assuming that, like.
The motion was prior to.
Prior to, yeah.
Would you like it, do you want another day?
November, something like that.
Would the second meeting of November be okay?
Second meeting, yeah.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion to include the, uh, to honor before the second meeting of November.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, okay.
Do yourself a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'll second that.
Okay, any objection? Okay, so Peggy, any other roll call? Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mann?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist? Yes. Okay, we move to item C, Project List and Budget Amendment for the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017. Michael?
Thank you. Good evening again. Earlier this year, the governor signed, uh, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017, which is better known as Senate Bill One or SB One, um, that, uh, chain, made changes and increases in various, uh, gas and diesel taxes and vehicle registration fees for the purpose of creating the new road maintenance and rehabilitation account, uh, which puts money into a whole bunch of different pockets and a whole bunch of different programs. Um, but the main thing that's important for us is that it will be sending money to cities for the express purpose of road maintenance, which of course is something that this council has been talking a lot about over the last couple of years. The estimates, the state will not provide its own estimates, however, the League of California Cities and their consultants have been providing estimates, and it looks like our share of the money for this fiscal year, um, 1718, is going to be $206,421, or somewhere thereabouts. Um, the, the kicker to this is that there will also be a local match requirement. So unlike the Measure M and Measure R funds, um, which just get handed to us, um, and we can spend them as we like, within the, within the realm of things that we're allowed to spend them on, um, the SB One money is going to be a little bit different. First, there is a local match requirement, and second, there will be reporting requirements whereby the city council has to approve what projects we're going to be spending the money on before we spend it, um, and then we have to report to the state each year on how we are spending the money. The local match requirement, um, is based on assumptions that the state made about, um, how we used our general fund money in previous fiscal years for road maintenance purposes, and what they're telling us, and, and Tracy, Ms. Haas is still in the process of verifying those numbers, um, so they may be subject to change a little bit, but based on the best information we have right now, um, it looks like our local match requirement for this fiscal year is going to be about $105,000. That has to be general fund money under the terms of SB One. It can, we cannot use Measure R or Measure M or Prop C or any other funding sources. It must be general fund money, um, to do the local match. So in looking at what projects we have before us that would be eligible for this, that we would recommend moving forward with this year, um, as the, the city council knows, and working with the Public Works Standing Committee, uh, we're in the process of preparing an RFP to go out to update our pavement management plan report. Um, so since we're in the process of doing that, we didn't want to make any recommendations right now about going out and starting to do, um, additional collector local streets until the results of that report are in, um, which will probably be late this year or early next year. Um, however, we have identified, and we were planning to bring to you in next year's budget, uh, a recommendation to resurface Roseme Boulevard. Uh, it's been, um, about three years, a little over three years, since that street was resurfaced. Um, usually about five years is the timeframe where you want to do a slurry seal, um, for maximum prolonging the life of the pavement, and since that is the most heavily traveled street in the city, um, and we're already seeing some cracks, um, appear in some locations, doing that a little bit early, um, is, is certainly a good thing to do. And coincidentally, our, our preliminary engineering estimates on the cost for that came in around $350,000, uh, and the total with the SB One funds and our general fund local match are a little over $300,000. Um, most of the contracts we've done lately have been coming in well below the engineer's estimate, because materials costs are, seem to be very low right now. Um, so although the estimate is 350, we believe that we can, can get that work done for the 311. for the 311, um, that we have available to us, or, or perhaps less. Um, so what we're recommending this evening, um, the council has to take, uh, formal actions, and we actually have to provide a copy of the meeting minutes to the state to show them that you did this. Um, that's, that's the level of reporting that's gonna be required for SB 1. So what we're asking you to do this evening is to approve the resurfacing of Rosemead Boulevard as our formerly designated project, um, for our SB 1 funds for fiscal year 1718. Uh, do a budget amendment to add that as a new capital project to the budget, allocate the $206,000 and change that we're expecting from SB 1, and the additional $105,143 from the unreserved general fund balance as the match. Um, put all of that into a budget amendment, and then authorize the city manager to, uh, fill out the paperwork that we're gonna have to file with the state, um, all of which is due in October. So this is all for fiscal year 1718. We will know, we already have the preliminary numbers for the next fiscal year, um, but by the time we have to make those decisions, we will have an updated PMP report, and we'll be able to come back to you with more detailed recommendations for how we wanna spend the money in fiscal year 1819. Um, so for now, we just need to worry about the, the first fiscal year and the first bit of money. Um, the money is expected to go up in future years. This money is less, because it's prorated, because we're already partially into the fiscal year, so it's lower than what we're expecting in future years. That concludes my presentation, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, thank you. Do we have any council questions?
Is, is, is Rosemead a much more heavily traveled street than Las Tunas, for example? I mean, I, I, I know Las Tunas is pretty busy, but I know only at certain times.
They're both pretty high, um, w- Las Tunas is around, depending on which section of the street you're on, it's around 22,000 to 25,000 cars a day. Um, Rosemead is more in the, around 30,000 cars a day, so it is.
Kinda close.
Yeah, Las Tunas is actually, um, higher, uh, west of Rosemead. That's in like the 30,000 to 35,000 range, but then so much traffic goes up or down Rosemead that it drops off as it comes further into Temple City.
Refresh my recollection, is Las Tunas on the schedule for repave men? Or are we waiting on the full design thing to come?
Yeah, it's not, it's not yet, but it, it is on, you know, we, we are aware that it's gonna need to be done soon, and we're looking at that as part of the, the package of possible enhancements that we'll be bringing back to you.
Last time was the repave, Las Tunas, I know it's been more than five years.
And the updated pavement management report as well will give us a good timeframe and a scale, so you could kinda see and make some policy decisions as well, on kinda where you wanna scale that as well.
And although they may be included in what we're gonna be doing in the future on Las Tunas, if anything, too. I would think that would be an issue to discuss.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And this will, also, just one other thing, this will start us the process, using, as, as, um, like, so several of the couns- the councilmembers have expressed before, using, you know, a dollar to leverage other money as well. So next year, uh, the preliminary estimates we have is that the city will be allocated about $600,000 a year, so we will have to maintain that $100,000 in general fund money, even though I don't wanna predict, but I have a feeling it's probably gonna be a little bit lower than that, based on some of the projections the state controller makes and what we report back. Um, but that will be essentially, right now, it's a two-to-one match. In the future, it'll be a six-to-one match, and the state will be watching this one, and these, these requirements are (laugh) a bit detailed. So I think i- in order to kinda be in compliance for the next round of funding, and the next round of funding of that, they'll kinda be tracking that and seeing how we comply, and making sure we're meeting all these deadlines and funding.
But we'll know that ahead of time, we can budget for that.
Yeah.
And we've always said that, I think, we've, we've always reiterated that throughout, uh, many last eight years we've been here. It's, for a city our size, it's always nice to leverage.
Absolutely.
What we have with what we can get, and this is an example of that, I think.
My question was, um, so we're gonna be expecting next year to actually put in the budget?
Yes, so that, that 105 or whatever would be.
Okay.
Kind of the minimum floor.
Okay.
Hopefully it will be less, but we, I, you need, you need to have the expectation that that will be kind of.
Right, exactly.
The minimum that we'll have to, to budget.
Okay, anyone else?
Just one last question, clarification question. Um, if we choose not to do it this year, does that, uh, would that disqualify us from particip- participating in the future?
Uh, it does not necessarily disqualify us from participating in the future, but, um, you would, you would essentially be giving up $200,000 this year to participate in that, but, um, and there'll be some level of scrutiny by the state, but it doesn't necessarily disqualify you from future funding. It's a year-by-year, project-by-project approval basis.
Yeah, where I'm going is they're looking for better leverage, that's all.
Understood.
Question there.
Yes.
If, um, if we didn't have SB 1, how would we have paid for the Rosemead resurfacing?
Uh, we pri- we would've recommended it in next year's budget, and it probably would've been a combination of, um, Measure R and Measure M, as we've been using on streets, um, as well as Rosemead Boulevard would also be Prop C eligible, since it's a transit route, so it would be some combination of those three funds.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but Measure M and Measure R money cannot be used for residential?
It can.
Oh, it can be, okay.
Yes, that's what we're using for the streets that we're doing right now, is Measure R and Measure M.
Okay.
And this funding kind of, it, not as restrictive, but it's, it, it, from what we've been able to see, this type of project appears to kinda fit within that timeframe, and we have more flexibility with those other two funding sources, which we've, we've been doing, as some folks have seen around town in the last few weeks as well.
Yeah, and, and I guess the last question, you mentioned a potential six-to-one match in future years of funding. That doesn't mean that we can, say, double our contribution and expect two times that much.
No, that, 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 the, the state's allocation will be fixed.
Fixed, okay.
Our contribution will be fixed as well in future years, so we'll just, though, from the projections that the league and the league's co- financial consultant has said, that's what the, that's what the numbers look like right now.
Okay, and, um, is it, ma- maybe, I haven't followed this particular legislation, but is SB 1 in danger of being repealed?
There has been, there has been talk, (laugh) and there has been, um, some political fights in other jurisdictions, um, of assembly and state senate seats, talking about some of the issues that arose from the passage of this measure. Um, and which is good, and what, what the good part of that is that the requirement of doing it project-by-project, year-by-year, we're not making any future commitments to some ongoing maintenance or other things related to this funding. So, like, for now, we know we'll get 200,000 plus our match, and we'll be able to do the rehabilitate, you know, the preventative maintenance on Rosemead. Uh, then we'll be doing that on a, on a carry-forward basis. So we're gonna be very careful about how we come, and we'll talk to the standing committee about this, uh, when we get some of the preliminary, um, information about pavement management, and then back to the entire council, about how we apply this funding. We were hoping it was gonna be a little bit more, um, uh, general, so we could, but it's, 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 it, they've created some guidelines which, you know, we have to be careful and have to look at it on a year-by-year basis.
Thank you.
Brian, I have a question, and I, I apologize for not knowing this answer, but do we pay for it upfront and they reimburse us, or do they give us the money?
Most, most, uh, most projects, we, we get reimbursed back on, on these things, so we, we upfront the cost, and then we submit those, and we demonstrate we've done the project, um, and we get, we get a reimbursement, that's usually the case.
So there, is there any kind of a risk, as far as if we pay for it and then they decide not to do it?
No, 'cause they will, they will, we will have a letter from them, similar to other, other projects that you've done in the past, Rosemead Boulevard and others, where you, you have a commitment from the state or the other agencies saying, "This project is approved. If you expend this money, we will reimburse you."
Okay, and that's before we spend the money?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, gonna open public comment, anyone? Closing public comment? Council comments, any last council comments? If not, can we have a roll, a council motion?
It's a long motion.
It's a really long motion.
I'll give it, uh, Madam Mayor, um, I move to approve the resurfacing of Rosemead Boulevard as our designated project for the road maintenance and rehabilitation account, uh, funds for 1718 fiscal year, uh, pursuant to Senate Bill 1. And approve a budget amendment to allocate $105,143 from unreserved general fund balance for the required maintenance, and approve a budget amendment out to add Rosemead Boulevard resurfacing as a new capital project, CIP, in the fiscal year 201718 budget, with a total allocation of 311, $564, including $206,421 in RMRA funds, and $105,143 from the general fund, and authorize city managers to submit the required documents to the California Transportation Commission for the state to receive the RMRA funds.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, is any objections? So moved. We move to item D, consideration to join the Taking Back Our Community Coalition and to support public safety-related legislative advocacy efforts. And, uh, we have, is Brian in?
Brian, I'll, I'll take, I'll take the, uh, beginning part of the presentation, Mayor Sternquist. Uh, Mayor Sternquist, members of the council, um, this item presented before you was a follow-up to my colleague, uh, uh, from Monrovia, Oliver Chee, uh, presenting, uh, the information related to this organization and the efforts that they're taking, um, in dealing with, uh, presenting public information, and then also legislative advocacy efforts, um, related to Prop 109, Prop 47, and Prop 57. Uh, as the staff report lays out, you know, the criminal justice system is a multifaceted and complex issue, but we are feeling the effects of increased crime throughout the city and throughout the region. Uh, so, uh, before you, the staff report lays out, um, what some of those efforts are, um, what some of the benefits are of, of joining. I know in, um, speaking with my colleague this afternoon, they will be meeting in October to discuss, um, bylaws and, um, some organizational structure, um, in kinda formalizing that in the future. And they are talking with some groups about some potential legislative efforts that would take place either in the form of some state ballot propositions or other, or other efforts to, um, help, uh, deal with some of the potential impacts of Prop 109, 47, and 57. We'll also note, too, and as you may know, the Board of Supervisors, under a motion by our supervisor, Catherine Barger, um, is taking an effort to study this issue, and, um, work with the LA County Sheriff and other, uh, law enforcement agencies to discuss this issue and understand and get, um, some additional analysis of what the impacts of Prop 109, 47, and 57 are, and what some efforts that the state or the county can take and what they're doing. So that motion, and the description of that motion, is included in your packet as well. So this is a multifaceted issue and a very complex societal issue as well. Um, uh, so these are some of the efforts that, um, some of our fellow agencies around us are taking, and I'm here for any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
I have a question, is there, is it, is it, is it, correct me if I'm wrong, but it almost seems like a duplication of the work that's being performed by the county.
I would, um, well, I think the county's taking a difference, a little bit of a different step first of there, there's, this is more the ability for these agencies, if, and the nine agencies, plus if we were to join, to provide some unified public information material and others, but also take the step towards legislative advocacy. I don't think the county, through that motion, is there yet. Um, they haven't taken that step, whereas this organization would probably look towards making some of those legislative efforts before then.
And are they limiting the, um, the membership, or are they taking, 'cause I noticed that COGS is part of this, uh, so it not only includes cities, but organizations as well? And is there a, a limit to that, or will they, are they soliciting just, uh, members, let's say, in, in Sangiovese Valley? Or, can you feel for that?
I don't think, my sense is, because there are no bylaws, it had no, uh, kind of membership, formal membership, uh, requirements, that they are taking, I think, interested, um, organizations and municipalities and others. Um, I'm sure there's some organizations that they wouldn't want with them in this effort, um, but I don't think there's, I don't think there's any limiting.
And, and last question, just kinda to play the devil's advocate in this, um, who this, kinda, this issue came up in a previous item. Are we kinda jumping the gun here, shouldn't we wait till there is a little bit more substance as far as bylaws, how this is gonna be run, before we actually commit ourselves to something? I mean, what are the advantages of, let's say, committing ourselves now, uh, versus a few months from now when, uh, this thing has been fleshed out, and we kinda understand what it's all about, how they're gonna go about doing things, who are gonna be the, uh, voices at the table, so to speak, those types of things?
I think our fellow agencies around us, and some of your fellow council members in other cities, are just, uh, kinda moving with this, um, because of some of the urgencies of what they see and are ha- is happening in their communities. Um, and I think this is, in its, this is in its infancy, but is, is, is growing. Uh, so, um, I wouldn't say there's a disadvantage per se in, 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 in joining now, but, um, there, there will, there will be some things that will be, that will be fleshed out, and I did kinda discuss that with my colleague this afternoon.
And I presume that even if we do commit to it, or if we decide to change our mind at some point, we can.
The resolution that's in front of you is, is a pretty straightforward one that would allow us to opt out, and there's not a huge, uh, initial cost related to that.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, anyone else?
I have a question. Um, I noticed here as part of the $1,500 fee, that it said that they would be giving us marketing material. Do we know if that will be translated into different languages? Or do we have to pay an additional cost to have those done?
No, there shouldn't be any additional cost, they're, they're not, they're, they're, they're working on some translated, um, they have the, the English, they have the English version right now, but they'll be working on some translation materials, and I know it's not on there, but the City of Almonte is doing a big, um, uh, public forum as well, and I know they're translating some of these materials as well.
Okay, and do we have any idea when the bylaws are gonna be ready?
Uh, no, I just, um, the discussion I had today with my colleague was, um, that they're, the next meeting, they're, they're meeting in October, they will be kinda discussing the parameters of the bylaws, kinda what they wanna get out of those, so there's not, there, I, it wasn't given a definitive date, but the first meeting related to that will be, um, in October. For those who've, who, for those who've, uh, initially joined.
And have these members already met?
They haven't had that, for, they've, they've had some discussions, and I know at the League of California Cities Annual Conference, this org- the entity did have a booth at the, uh, League of Al- League of California Cities Annual Conference, but in terms of a formalized meeting, I don't believe so yet.
So if we joined, would they be included in that meeting?
Yes.
In October to help?
Yes.
Perhaps?
No, we will.
Oh, form the bylaws and, okay.
Do, do we know what position the LA County Sheriff is taking on this, or are they, um, favor or against, or?
The LA County Sheriff's Department as a whole, I don't believe, has taken a formal position on this. I don't believe ALADS has either, but there is the LA County District Attorney's Office that has a deputy district attorney's office, who is now a member of this organization.
Okay.
I think the sheriff, and I can't, I, I can't speak for Sheriff McDonald, obviously, but, um, he has spoken about the issues of some of the unintended consequences and concerns that they've had related to AB 109, Prop 47, and Prop 57. But again, you have the motion in front of you by the County Board of Supervisors that talks about how they're going to approach studying this issue and understanding its impacts and effects.
Well, the reason I ask that is that it seems like every meeting we go to, the primary, uh, reason that is given for the increase in crime are because of the impacts of these, uh, bills, and you would think that, um, they would, uh, if they see this coming along, they would either join or do something on their own, or, I mean, I know you can't speak for them, maybe that's a question we can bring up at our next, uh, sheriff meeting.
I think, uh, in talking to Captain Flores a little bit, uh, just in, in having him kinda review the materials, there's kind of a general understanding and, and so, some level of agreement that some of these.
I doubt that they would take, uh, you know, be against it for any reason. Thank you.
Okay, gonna open public comment?
Oh.
Um, Steve?
Mayor Sternquist, Mayor Pro Temper Man, Councilmember City.
Mayor Sternquist, Mayor Pro Temperman, Councilmember, city staff. When I started out trying to get help for the homeless, it started out like this, where cities started joining, and it's been very successful in what's gone on. I think this is a good idea. It may be a matter of waiting another month to see what's going to happen with it before joining it, but I would eventually join this. You know, the city manager of Monrovia, and he's part of this, these cities that have been dealing with the homeless, and he's seen, you know, the problems multiply over to Monrovia and so have a lot of other cities. And I think this is a good idea and I think we should join it, but I would wait a month before joining it right away to see where this goes. Thank you.
Okay.
Lucy.
Lucy?
Good evening. As a member of Neighborhood Watch, I absolutely support joining this because we are suffering the consequences, whether directly and directly, whatever, and that's not even before Prop 57 takes effect. And sitting here and listening to city manager Chee's presentation last month really shocked me out of my skin. And I started distributing that video to a lot of people, hoping that they will read it and they will understand what's going on so they can take more of an active approach in protecting and taking back their own community. Many friends did ask, so do you know if the city is participating? I said, you know, I really can't see the city not participating in this. It doesn't make sense not to. I really don't also see why we have to wait because this is really something that we have to really... We have to take a proactive approach to gather more information, to let the state legislature... State legislators know, you know, these three laws that were either voted into or approved by the Assembly really did not have the best interest of the communities in their minds and that these communities are now binding together to voice their concerns and to tell them, hey, you know, you guys screwed up. We need to do something about it. So I really support participating in this program, and I really hope that you vote yes to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. Anyone else? Okay, I'm in the closed public comment. We have any council comments?
Actually, I have a question. Just came up. In the staff report, it mentions that Monrovia is the lead administrative agency for the coalition. What exactly does that mean?
Right now, and as the bylaws are being developed, it's... They actually are hosting the website right now, and they're acting as treasurer. So they're taking... They're essentially taking on the staff cost and burden of both of those things. So they're taking upon themselves to do that and carry those costs. And I think as the bylaws are developed or everything else is developed, that'll be defined a little bit better, but right now is what it is. What it means is the city of Monrovia has taken it upon themselves to bear the cost of that.
I have a comment. I would just like to say that I think we should support this. I think that fifteen hundred dollars is a small, very small fee that would just help us to educate our public. I think the public doesn't realize really... I mean, all of us, we are just bombarded with this constantly. Every conference we go to, everything, it's always about these bills, but the general public is not. And I think for fifteen hundred dollars, like Lucy said, why would we not do this? I mean, it's a great plan. I personally think that we should do it now because I would like to be involved in creating the bylaws myself because I would like to know what they plan on doing. And I think this would be a good opportunity.
Mayor Sternquist, I just have two quick questions. Is there a concern here that some of these members are contract cities and some are not?
No.
That as far as they have their own police department, we contract with the sheriff, could be a bit different views as to how one handles these things and what we do? That would be one concern, and I guess, of course, having a voice there would help to alleviate that. And also, who do we determine as a council who goes to these meetings or who's going to determine that? Or has that been already identified as to who's going to participate in these meetings to form the bylaws and basically to form the creation of this organization?
To answer your first question first, Councilmember Chavez, there are organizations in L.A. County. There's L.A. County Chiefs and others that talk to each other, and so there's a sense on big policy issues like this, there are organizations... L.A. County Chiefs, a former city I came from, Southgate, was a participant in that, and they work together with the L.A. County Sheriff's Department. So in terms of kind of a lack of a dramatic disagreement amongst the agencies, on big issues like this, you know, there... In my time, I haven't really seen that per se, but there is an organization and there's entities that kind of help kind of filter that through a little bit. On your second question, that's still to be determined. At least for right now, it's on the city manager level. I'm sure in the future that it will be, because of the policy implications of this, that it will be at the elected level as well. That just hasn't been clearly determined yet.
Yeah, because they're asking the city to join, not the city managers.
That's right. Absolutely.
I trust that you will represent the city well.
Yeah, that just hasn't been... That hasn't been determined yet, sir.
There has to be some determination, some policy decision.
And I'm very confident that that will be...
So we'll know more about that in the future.
Absolutely, sir.
All right.
Anyone else? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Mayor Sternquist, I would make a motion that we adopt proposed Resolution 17-5287, approving the city's membership in the Taking Back Our Community Coalition and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the city of Monrovia, and that we approve a budget amendment in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars... Fifteen hundred dollars, excuse me, for the Taking Back Our Community Coalition membership dues.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. If no objection, may we have the will call vote, please?
Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Fish?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temperman?
Yes.
Mayor Sternquist?
Yes. Okay. So how quickly do we join, Brian?
Thanks, Brian.
So we're just going to send in the check and...
Thank you, Brian. Good job.
Didn't even know Brian was sitting there. Did you want to say anything, Brian?
Okay, thank you.
Well, he's going to be probably one of the staff people helping out, so he needs to be... He needed to be here tonight, so thank you.
Were you hiding behind the sign?
It's so quiet.
Item 11, communications. There are none. Update from our city manager, Brian Cook.
Just a reminder, we had a very good coffee with the captain and our dedicated sheriff team, one of whom is here, Deputy Zuniga. And then just a reminder that on the 27th, we will have our monthly morning law enforcement summary. So we had some questions today from some residents of the... Members of the public, and I'm going to make sure... And some folks didn't always feel comfortable about asking questions, so we are there kind of before and more particularly if people can stay and they're not comfortable talking during public comment. We're there, and the dedicated team and others are there afterwards specifically for people to come, and they're not comfortable saying, you know, something happened in my neighborhood or I'm concerned about this, that we're there for them. And where the dedicated team is always there, but during the law enforcement meetings, I just want to express to the community, make sure we're there. You don't have to be part of a formalized meeting as well. You can wait around if you don't mind after the meeting as well. So... And I'll let the other council members announce the other items tonight, but that's it for me. Mr. Sternquist?
Okay. Update from our city attorney, Eric Vale.
Just real quickly, and I know the council's familiar with Senate Bill 649. That's the one that requires all cities and counties to open up the public rights-of-way to small cell facilities, which are essentially just small wireless base kind of repeaters for wireless networks and cellphone facilities. We've been tracking that. I know your staff's been tracking. It's passed both the House and the Senate, or the Assembly and the Senate on the California level, so I think it'll end up going to the governor, but I don't have any... I was looking for information to see if there was some indication as to whether he would sign it or not. We don't know that yet. So we'll let you know what happens, but essentially, if it passes, we'll only be able to regulate those by means of a ministerial permit, either an encroachment permit if it's within our right-of-way or on one of what they call our vertical infrastructures, one of our poles, traffic signal, something like that, or on a building or by means of a building permit if it's outside of our public right-of-way but in a commercial or industrial area. So we're going to see a lot of these start cropping up. The industry says that they're going to be relatively small and innocuous, but they can be up to six cubic feet for the antenna and 21 cubic feet for the equipment on a pole, and then another 33 cubic feet for equipment on the ground. So they're not little small cellphone things, they're pretty large facilities.
These will go on existing poles or new poles?
These will go on either. They'll be able to locate...
Overload more of our poles.
They'll be able to relocate things, assuming they can... We can put them in a particular place in our right-of-way and it doesn't block pedestrian traffic or it doesn't block use or things like that. But yeah, we're going to see a lot of these.
Do they go on poles or...
That's it.
If there's no existing pole, would they put new poles in?
Yeah, that's a good question. The law doesn't really specify whether or not they can put it on a pole. It just says that they... We have to allow them to put the facility in, so I think the inference is yes, we have to... We're going to allow them to have to put a pole in. But where I've seen pictures of these and what I've heard in the seminars is that they want to put them on all of our traffic signals and light poles first. So we'll see what comes next. We'll keep you informed as soon as that thing passes or it's vetoed. That's all I have for you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any? No?
No.
No. If I, as a city attorney, performance evaluation ad hoc committee, I think that's completed, so we can eliminate that one now. And Councilmember Fish, you and I need to meet on that facilities... We need to plan a time to do that. We can get together since we haven't done that for some time.
I'm sorry. What is the facilities option for recreation program ad hoc committee?
That was to look at ancillary programs at ancillary sites like the church and...
Alternative locations for our...
Okay. Is that... I thought staff was working on that.
I think they are working on it, but we haven't had an update because we haven't met.
The ad hoc hasn't met yet, so...
Okay. That's what you're talking about.
Yes. I just realized that was done some time ago.
Yeah, I didn't even realize until... Wait a minute, what is that?
But I think, I mean...
But they've been working.
They've been working. There's some things in the works.
And they've made headway on it.
Yes, they have.
Because I know they've made other...
Yes.
They are using other facilities.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Mayor Pro Temperman?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just want to share, I mean, last week, we had a great dinner with our commissioners at the New Green Zone restaurant in Camellia Square, and so I thought it was a great... It was a great evening. It was a great chance to sit down with our commissioners and really thank them for their service. I don't think we thanked them enough. They're really an extension of everything that we do, and I greatly appreciate all their efforts. And also, it was nice to at least try Green Zone. It has a soft opening right now, I believe.
Well, yes.
Yeah, so actually Helen...
Are they open for business?
They're...
Yeah, they're open. It's not a grand opening.
Yeah, Helen and I made the mistake of thinking they were open for breakfast, so we actually went there one morning, and then they had that sign that says they don't open till 11:00 a.m. Because I know there are other... There are other locations that believe are open earlier.
I think she's working on breakfast.
Oh, she's working on breakfast?
She plans to have breakfast.
Oh, good. Okay. That's what I heard, so...
Yes. I think I told you.
You might have. You might have told me, yeah.
But so they're working on breakfast. They wanted to give all the, you know, kinks worked out first.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I mean, I thought it was kind of neat that they were able to bring Green Zone because the other location they have in San Gabriel is known for organic Chinese food, which isn't very common. Like Lucy's laughing because she knows...
It's oxymoron.
Yeah, it seems like a...
But it tastes good.
Seems like an oxymoron, but yeah.
Yeah.
But hey, that's the great thing is we're, you know, we are...
We're trendsetters.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I... Well, maybe.
They have great sea bass.
Yes. I missed out on that. I missed out on the sea bass. But the chicken was good. Chicken was good. Just one other thing, I'm looking forward to Temple City Day at the L.A. County Fair this Thursday, so...
And with that, I'm going to let you read this since you've...
Oh, boy. I didn't...
You're on the topic.
All right, well... Okay, well, speaking of the fair, if you have not yet purchased your tickets to the Temple City Day at the fair, it's not too late.
I was going to mention...
You can still print your discount ticket from home or simply pick up a Temple City Day at the fair flyer and present it at the fair box office for $8 admission. If you like to avoid driving, the city is sponsoring a trip for $18 a person, which includes your ticket to the fair and transportation on an air-conditioned motor coach. The bus will depart Livo Park at 11:00 a.m. and will return by 7:00 p.m. If you already have your tickets but don't want to drive or pay for parking, you can catch a ride on the bus as well at no cost. If you have any questions, please call our Parks and Rec Department tomorrow, Wednesday, to reserve your spot because space is limited. That's good to know.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. I just have a question. When I don't hear Mr. Chavez to my right side.
That was my fault.
Having a sidebar.
Sorry about that.
Yes, thank you. So if you pay... It's $18 if you go on the bus and get a ticket, correct? But you can go to the fair if you have your tickets for $8 or for no cost to ride the So it's a better deal to just not have your tickets and ride the bus then, right? For free because it'll cost you 18 bucks to...
That includes your ticket to... Into the fairgrounds, the $18.
Oh, how much is it to get into the fair? Eight dollars?
Eight dollars.
So it's $10 to ride the bus if you buy a ticket and a ride to the bus, but free if you get on the bus. Do you see my point?
Yep.
I'm confused because it's $18 to get your ticket, which costs $8, and potentially $10 for the bus ride. But if you just say you're going to go on the bus, it's free.
The... We offered a trip to the fair because we had Temple City Day at the fair, and if you remember, our fees have us charge a $10 admin fee for everything, which is where the $18 came from. Because we didn't sell out the trip, we have some room on the bus, a limited basis, for individuals that may have already purchased their tickets or guests that are going, guests of our hero or someone that wanted to attend and not have to drive. So we're hoping that we don't just have a ton of people that are thinking that way and say...
Want to ride on the bus.
Yeah. We don't have a lot of spaces left, but we do have a limited number of spaces. If you already have a ticket and don't want to drive, we can accommodate you. We're just trying to make that as an option.
So they should call you soon?
Well, they have to know tomorrow morning because obviously the event is the next day.
Okay. Okay. Got it?
Got it.
Okay. All right. Let's see. Who's next on the list? I am, but I'll go last. Councilmember Chavez.
I agree with Mayor Pro Temperman. I think the Commissioner's Dinner was a great success. It was nice to see everybody there, most everybody. I thought the location was awesome. The food was excellent. Got a chance to talk with the owners. They were very, very nice people, seemed to really want to be part of the community.[1746.65]
very, very nice people. Seemed to really want to be part of the community. Believe they, correct me if I'm wrong, but they opened especially for us. They weren't even open that day. It was kind of funny, actually, to see people come to the door and they had to turn them away because they thought they were open. It was a full restaurant, but that's because we were in there. But very, very nice event, so thank you for that. I do want to give a shout out to Brian A. for today's coffee with cop. I know he had a lot to do with organizing that and, and he was there, as well as all of our sheriffs and our captain. And it was a good, good thing. I had a chuckle though. We, you know, got there when they opened, but, well, when it started, about 8:30. And then all these sheriffs in their uniforms are converging on McDonald's. And I could imagine, I could see the faces of the patrons inside when they, what the heck is going on? Like, maybe there was a shooting or something.
They were surrounded.
Because there were, there were a lot of sheriff deputies in there. And so, once they realized they were all just talking and had a cup of coffee in their hand, I think they calmed down. So, good event, good event to have. Just a reminder on the youth committee mentorship program that we talked about last, last meeting, I want to thank all of you who have selected your mentees. Is that what we're calling them, Peggy? Mentees? I've never heard that word, but I suppose that's correct. Mentees. If you haven't already chosen, you need to, if you can get that to Peggy as soon as you can, if you want, I know she would be happy to assign the students that we do have left as well. So just let Peggy know. Also, I just want to kind of calm your nerves a little bit on what is expected of this. And that is basically, whatever time you can devote, we don't expect anybody to have to change their schedules or do anything of that sort. Some of the suggestions would be, of course, maybe perhaps meeting with your students during your one-on-ones with Brian to kind of let them know what we go through and what we discuss. Perhaps meeting them before a council meeting, maybe discuss with them the agenda that night, go over similar things with them. Any kind of special meetings that we may have, or events that you may find that they may be interested in, of course, you could invite them to that. But it, it really is up to you. There's no minimum, there's no maximum. And whatever you can, whatever time you can offer is, is really your schedule. So, you know, I don't want anybody to feel that, you know, they've got to do this or they've got to do that. You know, we're, we're happy with whatever time you can devote, so.
Okay.
And I know the kids are very excited about looking forward to it and I'm sure they will get a lot out of it. So, and if there's any questions, you know, feel free to contact me or Peggy and, you know, she'll be able to answer anything about that, so. Okay. And I just had one question on the, since we talked about Edison tonight, do, do we know when they put up a replacement pole in the city? Or, I mean, are we given notice of that or how does that work?
Yes, we are.
The reason why I ask is because they put up a new pole on my corner, but the existing pole is still there.
Yeah, and they're-
And it's been there like about three weeks already. I don't know what the turnover is on that. Because they need, I guess they need to let it settle.
There, there's, there's a process that we get, and they, and they do notify us. Edison's been good in, in working with us about how that replacement schedule should happen.
Okay. Because they're putting up bigger poles, obviously. And the one in mine here is twice as big as the one in the-
And they meet with us once a year on a reliability report as well. And during that reliability report, they let us know some of the projects they're doing, some of the pole replacement. And sometimes there's pole replacement that they have to do just as a matter of course and inspection, and maybe some observations that the public has made that they've gone out and seen. But yeah, no, they're, they're good about, there's never ever a problem-free issue sometimes, but they make, they make, they make a deliberate effort in working with us through that process.
All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Fish?
The only thing I have is I just wanted to remind our residents that Congresswoman Judy Chu is having a health fair that's open to the public this Saturday, the 23rd, from 1:00 to 4:00, correct? From 1:00 to 4:00 at Live Oak Park. And there'll be a lot of health screenings and information for different things. So that'll be in addition to the health fair that we're having, which I believe is October 31st. So I just wanted to make sure, I'm not sure if there's a whole lot of publicity about that one, since it was done through Congresswoman Judy Chu's office. So I just wanted to make sure everybody knew that that's what's happening this Saturday. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just wanted to give you some updates on West Nile virus. The California Department of Public Health issued this on September 15. And it announced that there were three confirmed deaths in California due to the West Nile virus. And the deceased persons were residents of Kern, Los Angeles, and San Bernardino County. So it'll kind of give you an idea of how widespread the infestation is. One of the things that I wanted to mention is people over the years of 50 years old and individuals with diabetes or hypertension have a much higher risk of getting sick and are more likely to develop complications if you get bit by a mosquito that's carrying the virus.
Look nice to know.
So.
I got two strikes against me right there.
For those of you that fall into that category of-
Oh, three strikes. So what, what's the suggestion of what we should do?
Cover yourself in beet.
Not get, not get bit, I guess.
Buy all the mosquito repellent you can if you're going to be outdoors. But with that said, I, again, am going to refer to my discussion with Kathy Perini this morning and at my, our last mosquito and vector control meeting, which was last, a couple weeks ago. One of the scientists there that does the outreach for schools had approached me a few months back and asked me if she thought that Temple City would be interested in having a program that's aligned with the latest state standards for high school students in science, to actually be part of a program where the kids, someone from mosquito and vector control comes out and works with a high school teacher, and they actually learn how to identify whether or not a virus is present. And it's, it's a wonderful program. It has been used in Almonte. It took about four years to develop and write the standards with high school teachers. And Almonte had used it this last year, and the kids were just in awe of everything that they learned. And so I spoke to Kathy and I gave her all the information today, the letters from mosquito and vector control. And she was extremely excited about the program and was going to reach out to some high school teachers to see if they would be willing to undertake the program. It's an after-school program that, it runs about two hours. So I'm, I'm really excited that the possibility of having our own students work on trying to, you know, keep this virus under control. It might be in our own backyard, so pretty excited about that. Let's see, anything else? Thank you, Kathy, for all your work that we're going to reap the benefits for on Thursday. Dan Snell will be our hometown hero. There's a parade that'll start at 5:00 o'clock and hope a lot of people come out. It's been a very long time. Jerry told me it's probably been about 30 years, Jerry, since we've done that?
More than that.
More, more than 30 years.
About 40.
About 40 years and that we used to do it. And so I think it's really nice to come and partner with West Covina and what other city?
Walnut.
And the city of Walnut. So it will be their Temple, Temple City Day at the fair also. So come out, enjoy the fair. They have a great pickle booth this year. And they sell, oh, I love pickles, French fried pickles. And you can actually get a huge giant pickle corn dog without the dog. It's the pickle in the center and then all the cheese and then the corn meal around. It was delicious. So if you-
I don't know if it's worth the pickle or the, or the mosquitoes.
But anyway, come out, enjoy the fair. And, oh, yes, we need to continue here with the public comment part. Reimbursement of expenses, there are none. Additional public comments. Is there anyone who would like to speak? Steve, come on up.
Mayor Sternquist, Mayor Pro Tem Man, Councilmember City Staff. I could answer part of Councilmember Chavez's question about the old pole. There's a lot of areas where they replace a pole. They leave the old pole there. It could stay there six months, a year, and then they would come back and remove it. Sometimes it's, it involves the telephone company and the cable companies to move the wires onto the new pole. So it just, it bears down to as how fast can the telephone company and, and the cable company get there to move their wires. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close. Is there a hand? You have to jump up and down.
Well, once again, good evening, Mayor and Council. Mayor Pro Tem William Mann and Councilmember Tom Chavez. Yes, that was a very nice event that we had, the Council, the Commissioner Dinner. It was a nice venue, both venues, because we were actually at two of them. And it looks like everyone had a good time. Everybody that I talked to said the food was excellent, the company was excellent. So it was very good. And the other item is very satisfied with this new paving that they're doing. They did my street the week after Labor Day. The only bad thing about it was they scraped it off and they left it that way for three days. They came back on Friday, paved it, and you wouldn't know it because back with the old system they used to use, you used to get a lot of this little black gravel that would be all over the place for a couple of days. None of that. And it just went down nice. It doesn't stick to your tires. It's a really good process, so. If it's coming to your neighborhood, just be ready for the dust for a couple of days. But once it's done, it's, it looks like it's going to be done for quite a while. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jen. Lucy?
Sorry, I was debating. I didn't realize our day at the fair happens to coincide with our neighborhood watch meeting. So if you're gonna go to the fair, please make sure to go to templecityphotos.com and pick up one of the meetings from, earlier this year. We really have good information to share, but, you know, if you drive yourselves, please try to make it back for the meeting. And we'll have soft tacos. It's free. It's on the city. It's really good food. You're gonna pick up a lot of information.
And it costs a lot to eat at the fair.
Yes, it does. And they're not, they won't, you know, I mean, I would like to think we're healthier. The Bethlehem Lutheran Church? Yes.
The Halifax and the Pierce.
Yes. Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, we are adjourned.